So today, I want to, um, I want us to, to end the second session of our, our study of the Book of, uh, the Tradition of Wisdom. And then we will close with today's, uh, session. And we will reopen, uh, to, to close with, we'll reopen after Easter. Uh, I think the dates will be sent to you. Do we have the dates? Ah, okay. We don't have the date yet. After Easter, we will reopen and come back to study, uh, uh, wisdom in the Psalms, the Psalms that have wisdom material in them. We call them wisdom Psalms. And, uh, so we will come back to close our study of wisdom, Lady Wisdom, uh, uh, after Easter. And that will take us to, uh, the end of May or the, the, uh, early June. We will go to close, close our Bible study session with and wait for the fall for the next session. Okay, so today, uh, so what we want to do today is to look at wisdom, uh, Lady Wisdom. I mean, divine wisdom is Lady Wisdom. Uh, from now on, when you hear me say Lady Wisdom, I'm talking about God's wisdom. God's wisdom is known as Lady Wisdom. And don't be afraid to say that. Don't be afraid to say that no bishop is going to, uh, stop giving you communion because you said Lady Wisdom. Uh, so you can, you can see it like that because it says a lot. It says a lot when you say Lady Wisdom, it makes you begin thinking, uh, about how, how, how huge, how deep God is and how we don't know much about God yet. So you're calling wisdom or divine wisdom, Lady Wisdom. This is how it shows itself in the scripture, in the, in the books of wisdom. The wisdom tradition considers wisdom, uh, in that way. Lady Wisdom as a feminine and it reveals to us the feminine part or the femininity of God. And, and the fact that we have not, we have not explored all aspects of God. That doesn't mean that God is feminine. But it also, we want to make sure that we have said, we have mentioned the masculine for God so much that sometimes we miss the fact that God can be considered as feminine too. God is feminine, uh, uh, masculine, feminine and everything in between also. God is everything, uh, and, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't shortchange ourselves by thinking of God in one locked category only. Otherwise, God will be doing something for us, but we are not expecting to receive anything from a, a, a feminine perspective. So we wouldn't recognize that it is God doing that. Okay? Uh, so we have to broaden our mindset and make sure that we can receive as much as possible who God is to us. Okay? So, so Lady Wisdom, now we want, we have considered the books that are classically known as wisdom books in the Bible. Okay? Uh, the books that are classically known as the wisdom literature, we have considered those books. Now there are other parts of the Bible that have also, uh, other books in the Bible that have wisdom, this same Lady Wisdom material. And those are some of the books we are going to look at. Those are some of the, they are actually not books. They are just short stories, what we call novella, uh, and novellas. Novel, a novel is a longer, a longer story, uh, that has, uh, that you have, those, those of you who read, uh, novels a lot, you know that they are in the big, big volumes with, with different characters, with nicely well-done plots and, and middle story and, and, and a great ending. You have the romances, uh, you have all these. Okay? But long before we started having novels, that's the long, well-developed, uh, books or volumes written, we used to have in the ancient time, it was a tradition that they had short stories, shorter stories. And many of them are, can be found in the Bible. And in those places also, those novellas, there is Lady Wisdom showing up. Okay? Uh, God's wisdom shines through those stories. So those are the stories we want to consider. Everybody who treats the Bible or does Bible studies in a very serious form does not just consider wisdom in the classical books. They also touch on other parts of the Bible that are not classically wisdom books, but there are certain stories. These novellas are very, very important and they show what it means, uh, what God's wisdom, uh, means. And therefore we're going to consider that in the Bible, but we're also going to consider how they came to be. Because they were not written, the, uh, the Jewish people were not the only ones who had that. In fact, the Jewish novels or novellas or their stories, they were younger than the older stories of Egyptian, ancient Egyptian stories. And then they have also ancient Greek stories. And when the Jewish people came to write their stories, they depended on some of the writings that were already there. They depended on the right ancient writings that were there before they came along. So they wrote their stories almost like, using, using categories like what, uh, the ancient Egyptians and the ancient Greeks were writing. Okay? So that is why we are going to consider, so, uh, today we are going to consider, uh, uh, we're going to start with the development of novels. Okay? How novels developed. And we're going to consider the Egyptian novels, uh, which are non-biblical. We're going to consider Greek novels, uh, which are also non-biblical. But then we are going to then, uh, see how they helped to write the Jewish novels, the biblical ones that we have. And then we will consider the Jewish novels in details. We'll look at the general themes of the Jewish novels. And then we'll look at the kinds of novels which will let us know, uh, uh, how Lady Wisdom shines, what, how wisdom, the wisdom of God shines up, comes out of these, uh, novels. Okay? So who would have thought that, that, that we'll be talking about novels and doing Bible study and talking about novels? Okay? But this is, this is it. Uh, usually, the Bible is more, is deeper than, than what many of us sometimes take it. The Bible actually was written out of material taken from a whole lot of secular writings and, and, the Bible is not, the Bible can touch all aspects of life. Okay? Uh, and so when you are reading any book from the wisdom literature, just make sure that you have these things in the back of your mind. They will help you to understand what you are reading. Okay? Okay, so then let's look at the development, um, um, let's look at the developments of, of novels. Okay? And so, so we want to consider the Egyptian material, Egyptian materials or the novels, uh, uh, the writings, some of the short stories of, of Egypt. Okay? Uh, in Egyptian material, in eighteen, as far back as 1800 B.C., 1,800 years before Christ, uh, there was this ancient story called Sinuhi. Sinuhi, uh, you can Google these things. These are classical, they are classical stories and that are very interesting to read. Uh, many of them have some characteristics. They are just short stories. Uh, Sinuhi, for instance, uh, was an official. He was an, uh, uh, a kind of, uh, uh, Egyptian who fled Egypt. He left Egypt and went to settle in Syria. Okay? He went to settle in Syria and then he married over there. But then something happened and he had to, oh, the, the, the Egyptian king was changed. And the new king that was very generous towards him, uh, allowed him to come back. And he went back to Egypt, his own motherland and married, uh, there. And then, and then, uh, uh, propagated his, his children and became very famous back in his own hometown. But that is a story that, that began like with, uh, with a tragedy and then went through difficulties and then came back and then ended up like, like we see in the movies, right? Uh, the movies always sometimes at the end, things come back to normal and then you see people kissing and people hugging. It, it, it all ends well. Okay? But you and I know that life, life, life is always like, it doesn't, it ends, but then it opens up to a whole kind of worms again that you have to go through. Okay? You never get finished. Okay? So, so, but these are stories that have, uh, opening, uh, middle part and then the conclusion that ends well. So Sinuhi is one of those, uh, Egyptian stories. Another one is, uh, Wen Ammon. Wen Ammon was an Egyptian temple official. Okay? Egyptian temple official, uh, who, uh, uh, who is actually, the story is actually about the Egyptian, uh, uh, god. Uh, Egyptian gods of the dead, the gods of the dead. Uh, now when you're listening, hearing the gods of the dead, you begin to see why the Israelites started talking about their god as the god, not only of the dead, but of the living. Okay? So, so it's like they were seeing, they're trying to write their stories, but challenging existing stories. Sometimes they base on that story, but sometimes they challenge the existing story. So Wen Ammon is one of those. And then, uh, Anubis, uh, the, the, the story of Anubis has even a better version on the internet. You can Google that and you can see it on YouTube. Uh, it's a term, it's a kind of, it's a god. Uh, Anubis is a god. And you can watch what it's all about. I mean, there's this drama about a god, the gods that are in, uh, uh, shown in dramatic, uh, uh, form and situation. Uh, so Egyptians have these, uh, these stories. Long before we started having stories in, in the Bible, some of the stories, one of the stories we are going to consider is the story of Susanna. Susanna's story, uh, uh, the, uh, it's all based on stories like this. Okay? So we will look at, then, then there is also the biblical material. So you have the Egyptian material that, the biblical material that started in 1200 B.C. Okay? 1200 B.C., uh, some of them are even later than that. They based their writing, the biblical material was based on earlier Egyptian, 1800 B.C. Okay? And then, uh, uh, going forward, the biblical material and Egyptian material may help to make the Greco-Roman, uh, the Greek and Roman era, the romances that we, we, uh, what we call the, uh, the romances, they started in the 500 B.C. When the stories were now becoming larger and longer and longer. Not just short stories anymore, but they're becoming longer and longer. Uh, and then you have the Middle Ages. The Middle Ages, when we talk about the Middle Ages, the medieval times, we are talking about 500 to 1580. Okay? Uh, 580 to 1580. So from 1400, 1400, a year, uh, sorry, the year 400 all the way to the year 1500. Okay? That's the Middle Ages. That's what we call the Middle Ages. Okay? And this is the time that Catholicism, Roman Catholicism flourished in this time, a thousand years. Roman Catholicism took root between this time. Before 580, there was the Catholic Church. Catholicism was one church, all churches. There was no other, other church. Being Christian is being Catholic. And Catholic here before 500 was the small c Catholic. And that is, that is the universal church. You are a church, you are a Christian church, you call Jesus Christ, you belong to the Catholic Church. You are Catholic with a small c. Okay? It doesn't matter how you believe, whatever you are doing, you belong. Once you are Christian, once you proclaim the name of Christ, you are Christian. That's, that's the kind of, uh, Catholicism that was there before. But at from 580 going, uh, specifically 4680, when the last Council of Chassidon was convoked, that's when we finished with, with the Nicene Creed. And, and, and then, and then Catholicism became this huge, uh, Roman, uh, uh, Roman Catholicism, the Latin, uh, Catholicism and the Western Catholicism as opposed to Eastern Catholicism. Okay? So, uh, so this is what, what we are talking about. That is the time that they have the Renaissance and where writing, different kinds of writing, uh, uh, took place. Romans, uh, became very, very well-developed. There was more detail. There were characters, different characters. Uh, no more one person, one personality. There were different characters in a, in a novel. Uh, novels were developed, better developed. And then that stayed until the 19th century. Okay? 19th century, uh, uh, where you had, uh, uh, so the 19th century, you are talking, uh, 1800. I wrote 800. That is not correct. It's 1800, uh, 1800, the year 1800 all the way to now. When emphasis on personalities, short stories, character developments, uh, novels emerged with plot. There's always a plot. This time, we're going to have a plot at the beginning and then a characters and then a endings and the feelings were developed. Uh, uh, the, the novels boosted people's feelings. So, so, so this is the way, uh, uh, the trajectory of the development of novels. Now let's go on and, um, and look at famous Greek novels. Okay? So we have seen Egyptian novels and how novels were developed. What are some of the novellas that you find? You can Google these ones too. Uh, and they're very beautiful. Many of them are very, uh, nice stories. But the reason why you should sometimes click any of these things and read them is that they, they almost look like the story of Solomon, for instance. They almost, some of them look like, look like the, the Song of Songs, the love story, love expressions that, that you read in Song of Songs. It will help you to, to, to understand what you are reading in the Bible. But these are outside the Bible. And many of, some of you may, may have seen this already because if you studied, if you studied ancient, uh, uh, literature in, in college, you will come across some of these things. Okay? Uh, so there's the Cherytan. Uh, uh, this story is a love story. Okay? It's a love story, uh, that is written, was, was, was put together in Syracuse. I mean, in Greece. Right? Uh, and so, uh, it's a love story. You can find a, a love story that, that looks like that in the story of Samson and Delilah. Uh, you can see many of these stories in many, uh, of, of our Bible. Xenophon is one of those, uh, popular ones. The story called the Ephesian Tale, uh, uh, is an adventure, uh, romance, an adventure romance. We have movies that are adventure movies. Okay? Uh, so, so it's something that, 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 that is well-known. And it is considered the, the story that inspired Shakespeare's, uh, plays, some of Shakespeare's plays. Uh, so it's an adventure of romance story, uh, uh, romance, I mean, adventurous romance between two young people. That's, that's that story, Ephesian Tale. Then you have that one, Tacitus, uh, uh, Clitophon. Um, I don't, I didn't, I didn't get the full understanding of, of that, uh, story. But then you have Longus. Uh, Longus has the Venus and Chloe. Okay? This is again, another, uh, tale. It's a tale about young love and country life. Country, country life. Young love in a countryside. Uh, we can find something like that in our day. And then you have Heliodorus. Uh, Heliodorus has a story called an Ethiopian story. And it's about a young Greek priestess, a young Greek priestess, a, a, a young woman who realized, uh, later she was, she was Greek, she knows she was Greek. But she came to find out that she was a descendant of some of the rulers of Egypt. Some of the pharaohs. So, so her story was that she went back to look for her, her roots. And then, um, uh, she, she became a part of, uh, she reclaimed her, her roots and was, became very famous. So that is an Ethiopian story, uh, that, that you can, you can see. So these Greek novellas, they are Greek stories. They, they really can illuminate our understanding of, of what we read in our books. So now let us go on to the, uh, to the Jewish novellas proper. So, so the Jewish novellas are the books that we have in the Bible. So we want to consider what themes do they, do they, uh, uh, do they write on? Uh, what themes do the Jewish stories, short stories, the novellas of, uh, in the Bible? Uh, the short stories there, they, they talk first of all about survival identity. Like, it's like the, the community, the story is written about how the community survived an encroachment of other, another powerful nation. Like let's say, uh, Russia encroaching on, uh, uh, Ukraine and, and how Ukraine survived. So stories are told about certain individual heroes, certain people. We hear that on the news many times. The story of a mother who, who shielded her daughter and, and suffered an amputation of her hand because of a bomb, but was able to protect her child. That story is, is a survival identity story. Okay? It's a theme. Uh, so the Jewish novellas are, are mostly dedicated to, to doing, uh, telling stories like that. Okay? Uh, or a story that the, 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 our, our people's culture is coming to this close to being wiped out totally and, and, and how, how we survived. So that's one of the things. And then the second thing, theme that, that they project, uh, is, is that, uh, it projects women as being underdogs. Women are women and it considers women and underdogs uh, and how they actually get out or get away from being, uh, uh, oppressed and, and from being, uh, 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 from being killed or from being violated and things like that. How they do that is trick, they, they trick their, their oppressors. Okay? Uh, that's wisdom. Uh, wisdom, wisdom here is a, is a way to trick the system to, 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 to neutralize. I'll tell you something about like the slaves, for instance. The slaves came out with a way of talking about their masters in front of their masters without their masters really knowing that they are talking about them. Okay? They come out with a way, some vocabulary, that's wisdom. That's a way to, 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 to elude being oppressed or being stopped or being killed. So they were using biblical words. They will be talking about, uh, the emperor, yeah, but they are talking about the emperor or they are talking about, when they say in the emperor, they are talking about the master, but the master doesn't know. Or they are talking about, uh, 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 I will be gone soon. I will be gone to, I'll be gone home to see my lord. The master will be thinking that, oh, maybe they are talking about when they die, they will go to the, to heaven. But they were talking about escaping. You know, talking about escaping. You know? Heaven is, heaven is, heaven is Pennsylvania. Okay? Because at that time, the Mason-Dixon line divides the south from the north. And the south is where slavery was going on, oppression was going on. So they were taking, when they are talking about, oh, uh, soon I'll be going to see my lord. I'll cross the river Jordan and I will go see my lord. The slave master thinks that, oh, uh, they are praying that, uh, they will have a good death and then they will go to heaven. But they are, they are talking about trying to run away and get to Pennsylvania. You know? So that's very, uh, trick, tricks, tricksters. And so, and so, underdogs and, and people who are oppressed always, uh, have to find a wise way to be able to elude their oppressors and survive. Okay? So these books talk about that very much. We'll see the story of Susanna very soon. And then, uh, uh, the next one is that, the next theme is, uh, that, the, the stories normally exact, are full of exaggeration. Okay? I mean, this is, uh, where a lot of exaggeration and sometimes even false history. But, uh, it, this is being very, uh, uh, these are people who are very, who are full of faith. They are so much full of faith that they get to exaggeration of it, almost unreal. Uh, uh, they talk about miracles to their highest, highest way that they sometimes are no longer, uh, uh, conceivable in reality. Right? Okay? So, so that is something, some kind of a theme that you see are there. The next thing is the sex and violence. Uh, 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 sex and violence and, and how the Jewish, uh, community, uh, uh, learn from these experiences. How some, some, how some of these can, can help people to generate, to generate, uh, wisdom or to use wisdom to overcome some of these things. The wise ways to overcome some of these things. Uh, the chaotic pattern, their pattern is chaotic, which means it's like symmetrical. Normally they talk about it, they talk in, in symmetrical fashion. Okay? They don't, they don't just talk one way, but they are like A, B, C, D, uh, A, B, C, uh, uh, C, C, B, A. Okay? So A, B, C, C, B, A. Uh, when they do something here, they have to do the same thing here or do something that can complement, that can be symmetrical, uh, with it. When they are talking, they talk symmetrically. They, they don't, they don't just say one, it's not a linear thing. They, they say things in symmetrical fashion. They will say it one time and then they will say it again. That almost looks like what they have just said. Uh, okay? Uh, or, so that's something that we, we see in the writings of the novels. Now let us go on and, and look at the kinds. the kinds, and this is what brings us to the, to the end, as we consider the kinds. The kinds are, uh, do you have succession stories, okay? Succession, like, like somebody, somebody who, uh, who succeeds, uh, uh, succeeds, uh, somebody. If you, if a king is dying or if a rich man is dying, he calls his descendants and then hands over, hands over, uh, the running of a state or becoming a king or whatever. They, uh, they hand it over and it's a ritual, it's a very well done. Like David called his son Solomon and then, and then called his generals and called the priests and or called the prophets, all of them together and to makes a formal, formal handing over the, the kingship to his son long before he himself died, okay? So these are something that they are supposed to be doing and so there are narratives of that. Uh, 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 the, 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 and most of those narratives date back to eight, uh, uh, ninth century, eight hundred fifty to seven hundred fifty B.C. It was mostly success, succession narratives, okay? So some of the, uh, examples are Second Samuel. The whole book of Samuel is not a wisdom literature, but this part of it is wisdom liter- wisdom writing, okay? So Second Samuel, chapter nine, verse twenty, First Kings, chapter one, uh, First King, chapter one and two. If you read that, you will see some of the succession stories. Then the Joseph novella, you, you all know about the Joseph story? How he, his brothers, uh, pushed him into the system and then, and then he was taken, he was rescued. He was rescued and then he was sold to the Ishmaelites. Uh, he was sold to the Ishmaelites who are going to Egypt. Ishmaelites, these are Arabs we are talking about, Ishmaelites are the same as the Arabs. But Ishmaelites, uh, if you look at it very well, Joseph is the son of Jacob. Jacob's brother is Isar. Their brother, their father, uh, Jacob's father is, uh, um, uh, uh, Jacob's father is, uh, Isaac, okay? And Isaac is, Isaac's father is Abraham. And Abraham's children are Isaac and Ishmael. Okay, so, so we are talking about, uh, uh, Joseph's great grandfather is the Ishmaelites also great grandfather. Okay, Joseph's great grandfather, Abraham, is the father of Ishmael. Who is also, so, so the Arabs, the Arabs are also of the same, they come from the same, they are the Israelites. They are from the same father. They are brothers and sisters. Arabs and Semitic people, Arabs are Semitic too. Arabs and, uh, and Israelites are all, they are all brothers and sisters. They all call Abraham as their father in faith. Go figure that out. Why are they fighting like that, okay? Uh, anyway, uh, so, so let's continue looking at, uh, uh, eh, the, the Joseph novella. Uh, uh, Joseph's story is very interesting, how he became famous. He's survivor, okay? He was a Jew who made it, and that's one of the things. A Jew who made it in the foreign land, uh, the survivor, uh, narrative. A Jewish person who made it through in a foreign land. That is the story of Joseph, the novella of Joseph. And then you read that of Luke, I mean Luke, uh, Ruth. The story of Ruth, I think my clicker is not working, uh, so you can move it for me, yeah. Ruth and, uh, J- uh, and the story of Jonah. How many of you have read the story of Jonah? Jonah was sent to go and preach to this, uh, P- uh, Ninevites. And he decided not to go because he didn't want his God to, to save those people. Those people are not part of the Israelite. I don't want to go preach there because if I go preach there, they will change and God is a merciful God and God is going to forgive them. But God doesn't have to forgive those people. Those people are not part of us. They don't deserve God's forgiveness. But the story is meant to teach that, that wisdom, uh, God's love is for everybody. That's what wisdom is. If we see wis- the, it is the wisdom of God that, that God's love is universal. We have to see things, see, to be able to see things like that, the human race as, that, where the human race is a children of God. If we see it that way and not just Catholics. Catholics is for a purpose, but its purpose is not to make us exclusive beneficiaries of God. It is exclusive in one way because it helps me. But I shouldn't look at myself alone as the only one who, who benefits from God or who is entitled to God's love. I should think about the entire world, humanity in general, okay? That's wisdom. It is wisdom to think that way. And Jonah teaches that, 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 that wisdom. And the story of Ruth also, Ruth and Naomi, they are, they are, Ruth was a foreigner. Ruth was a foreigner, but who became the grandmother of David, the greatest king of Israel. Okay, Ruth was a foreigner, okay? But he married into, uh, uh, the Jewish community and, and became the mother, uh, the foreigner became the mother of the greatest king, the king of God, the most important king of Israel, David. Okay, all right, so, so that's very important there. And then Daniel, the story of that, Daniel told a lot of stories and one of the stories is the story of Susanna. The young woman, beautiful woman, who found herself in a foreign land, Babylonia, okay? And then s- a man who was wealthy married her. And when he married her, I mean, eh, 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 the wealthy man with a big mansion and a gar- a nice garden. And there were two men who were appointed judges who were always lusting over her. Always lusting, when they see her, they want to do something to her. And they kept, they kept lusting over her that one day, they fabricated a story against her that she tried to lure them to sleep with them, uh, uh, to sleep with her. And so she was arrested and was about to be stolen to death. And, and the prophet Daniel intervened. The prophet Daniel intervened and, and sorted out and tried to ask them questions and was able to catch them, uh, catch their lies. And Susanna was saved. Beautiful story. You should, you should read some of those stories. Uh, 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 Daniel, chapter one, two, uh, uh, three, eh, uh, chapter one, two. And then chapter four and chapter five, those, those places can give you that story. But I have, uh, the su- story of Susanna itself, it can be found in chapter thirteen, okay? The whole chapter thirteen, I'm going to assign that to you. Uh, read Daniel, chapter thirteen. That is the story of Susanna, okay? All right, so let's move on to, uh, uh, other, some of the other stories are Tobit, okay? Tobit and Esther. The book of Tobit and Esther, the book of Tobit is someone who, who had a very interesting story. Uh, I, I love that story, uh, eh, eh, it's a lot of humor in it. Uh, also the story of Esther, Esther also was in, in, in Babylon, but, uh, their story, uh, is more of a survivor, yeah, survivor in, in Babylonia, eh, survivor of their people. Uh, uh, hopefully you'll be able to draw something, and that dates back to three hundred B.C. So around three hundred B.C., uh, those, those stories could not, not take place in Israel. They took place in, in Babylon, okay? So then you come to Daniel again, uh, Daniel has other stories. Eh, eh, and that's the Susanna story that in chapter thirteen, chapter thirteen through chapter fifteen. Uh, that is the, uh, Greek part of it. Uh, uh, some of his stories, chapters one through six dates back to two hundred and fifty B.C. And then, uh, uh, chapter thirteen dates back to hundred and fifty B.C., okay? The story of Daniel, and then in this particular story, it's, it's more about a deliverance. God intervenes into a situation that was going to go bad for a woman. And mostly many times it's about the story of a woman who is about to be, to be stolen, a woman who is about to be debased. A woman who is about to be, to be, to be condemned, a woman who is in trouble. And God intervenes and God delivers, okay? Uh, so, so that, and with the exception of this story Judith, the book of Judith. Uh, that's another, uh, book with novels, novellas, let's say novellas, short stories. And, and, and it's among all the, uh, uh, novellas, the Jewish novellas that talk about women, it is in this one that women are projected, only this one that women are projected in good light, uh, I mean, as strong and, and as leaders and as charismatic and, and, and it's only in the book of Judith, okay, that you find that. And that dates to hundred B.C. And then you have this book called The Testament of Joseph, The Testament of Joseph. Okay, The Testament of Joseph is, uh, uh, you can find that also, you can Google it online. It's, uh, it's in a PDF form online, it's not too long, you can read it, uh, at your leisure. Uh, and it talks about Joseph's, uh, Joseph's life, uh, the way Joseph was seeing life in, 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 in Egypt. You have also The Testament of Abraham, uh, The Testament of Abraham, uh, all that one too is online. It's a story about romance also. Uh, do you know that Abraham, uh, Abraham once tried to pimp his wife, Sarah? Once, he tried to do that, he tried to pimp his wife. Uh, uh, he went to Egypt, he went to Egypt, Abraham went to Egypt. Sarah was a very beautiful woman and Abraham went to Egypt and he was afraid. He was afraid that the pharaohs, the kings would, would kill him and take his wife. So he was afraid that he would be killed. So he, he actually told the, the king that Sarah was, uh, his sister, not his wife. He said Sarah was my sister, because he knows that whether he's a sister or his wife, they are going to take his wife. Because the, his wife was so beautiful, they are going to take his wife. So either way, they are going to take his wife, but eh, he wants to be alive if they take his wife, so, so he said his, uh, Sarah, uh, was his, uh, sister, not his wife. So that he can be spared not to be killed. Yeah, Abraham did that, okay? Okay, all right, so, so, uh, finally there is this book of, uh, first and second books of Maccabees. And third Maccabees, the Maccabaeans, the Maccabaeans were the Jewish, uh, Jewish resistant family. They were the family, it was the family that resisted the Greeks colonizing, uh, 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 the Jewish people. The Maccabean family, there was some guy called Mattathias. Mattathias was the one who stood up and then says, who is going to join me to fight these Greeks? And a lot of the Jewish boys joined him. It's like, it's like in, uh, in Ukraine, when the president says, where are the young men? Uh, where are the young men and women of fighting age should come and join and resist? So the Maccabaeans are people who fought for survival of the culture of Israel uh, in that time, uh, after, after, uh, uh, hundred, uh, uh, B.C. Uh, then you have the Tobi- Tobiad Romance. The Tobiad Romance, uh, is, is also a Jewish short story, uh, that is also very popular. Uh, uh, the Tobiards, the Tobiards are the wealthy Jewish families. And, and the drama that occurred in wealthy Jewish families. This is what you call the Tobiad Romance, okay? So, so you will find them online too, you can Google it. Uh, there is, there are books, there is a book that is called, uh, the, a book that you can get to help you, it's called Ancient Jewish Novels. Ancient Jewish Novels, that is the title of the book. Ancient Jewish Novels by Lawrence Wills. Lawrence M., middle, middle name M, a middle initial M, Wills, okay? So the title of the book again is Ancient Jewish Novels by Lawrence M. Wills, W.I.L.L.S. Okay, all right. Okay, so that will bring you many of these stories, many of these stories you, you will see out there. And so that's the Tobiards, the Tobiards, uh, 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 book are mostly romantic, uh, 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 or romance. Well, when we are talking about romance, I mean, we are not, uh, uh, many of you know ro- ro- romance. When I say something is romantic, it's not, it's not about, uh, it's not so much about, eh, eh, sexual attraction or anything like that. It's more that there is a happy ending. Or there, it starts, there's a beginning and there is, there is some kind of, uh, uh, uncertainty and struggle in the middle and everything is like, oh my God, and, and then it ends well. So romantic, romanticism is about starting in a very humble way, facing difficulties and all ends well. It ends well, but like I'm saying, I'm telling you, uh, that's a utopia. Romance, romantic is there, romance is there to, to, to push some sugar a little bit into our chaotic life. Life is, life is not that, life doesn't just do like that, no. Life is complicated, okay? Uh, so, so, but, but it has its value, its value is every now and then give us some hope that one day, uh, one day things will end well, good will triumph over evil. That is the value of, of romance, to, to nullify our chaotic and confusing and, and difficult world, okay? Um, then, uh, eh, so that's the Tobiards. And then you have another story called The Royal Family of Adiabe. Uh, Royal Family of Adiabe was written in, eh, was composed in fifty eighty. This is late, fifty eighty, okay? We are talking B.C., a lot of the books were B.C., before Christ. This is after, uh, 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 the common, after the death of Christ, okay? In the year of our Lord, sorry, in the year of our Lord, uh, uh, fifty eighty. And then you have the story of, this is a very romantic story, the story of Joseph and Azinaph. Uh, very beautiful story, it's a story where, uh, eh, eh, they're like, the, the two lovers were like, uh, just, eh, eh, Joseph was trying to date Azinaph and Azinaph didn't want, want to date, uh, Azinaph is a, is an Egyptian. Was an Egyptian, uh, uh, priestess, uh, from Egyptian priest's family. And she was very beautiful, Joseph was trying to court her and she was resistant, she didn't want to. And then finally, when she gave in and they, they wanted, then Joseph was the one who was resisting, started pushing her away. Uh, uh, so, so it's like, it's like that, that dance, that tit for tat dance. Um, uh, uh, very interesting. Uh, it's a mu, mutual rejection, uh, uh, of, of, of love story. So, um, I can tell you that any Israelite, any Israelite who lives in the diaspora, not in Israel, the diaspora, the Israelite who lives outside of Israel, they read these books more than they read, uh, the, uh, uh, wisdom books. They read this, eh, eh, these, these stories that, some of, some of these stories, uh, some of them are in the Bible, but some of them did not make their way into the Bible. Jewish people who lived in the diaspora depend more of some of these, uh, uh, stories, because they, they actually help them to survive, they help them to universalize things, to see things in a broader context, because they live outside of Israel, they don't live on their land, they live outside of Israel. So they are not going to hold on to just what is Israelite, no. Eh, they, they, you, you're not going to be able to be, to live outside of your, a, a place that doesn't speak your language, a place that, that doesn't promote your culture in a wider way. You have to learn to, to let go some part of your culture, and buy into somebody else's culture, and mix them. You have to learn to be multicolored, otherwise you die. So, eh, eh, so that is why they push universalism, they push survival, they push, uh, all kinds of these, these things that the novellas, the stories, uh, give them. And then that helps them, that, that for us, that helps us when we read the story of the Bible, ah, we know where these things are coming from. This is the context of the wisdom, uh, uh, stories. And this is why wisdom is seen as lady wisdom. Because in that whole context, in that whole culture of the Middle East, these are some of the things that were going on. These are the, this is the environment, this is the way of thinking, eh, 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 stuff like that, that were going on. So the, 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 the fact that we see the biblical stories, uh, uh, wisdom books, see wisdom as a feminine has, has a reason. This is the context it was born from, everything that we have said, we have said over here. So we're going to stop here and, uh, uh, we will, we will begin, or resume after Easter, and we will study the wisdom psalms, okay? So if you have any questions, I will now take them, uh, before. Yes, Gloria has a remark here, let's see. Gloria asks, uh, eh, you to remind everyone that the Diocese of Okan will be participating in the consecration of Russia tomorrow, starting nine A.M., with the act of consecration prayed by the Pope at ten thirty. Uh, uh, so I want to thank you for saying that. We are having our mass here, all churches are trying to be part of that. So we are having mass here at nine A.M. We will be doing, eh, we'll be praying the prayer of consecration in sections. We have prepared to let the participant, uh, pray the prayer of consecration. And then we'll have mass also at seven P.M. And that mass will be live streamed too, so you can, uh, are we live streaming the morning mass?
Oh, but the second, the seven o'clock has music as well.
Uh, yeah, the seven P.M. mass has, uh, music, uh, 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 beautiful, Hannah is going to sing. Uh, uh, and, and, uh, the nine A.M. mass has no music, but it will be live streamed too. So you can join us, you can go online and click on the prayer of consecration. It is available, you can print it out, and then join us as we, when we pray it within the mass, okay?
There's a link in today's flock note, a lot of them would.
Yeah, we have sent flock notes to you.
It was already.
There's a link in there, and, uh, and also a, a link to the, uh, consec, prayer of consecration. So let us join in and pray for people like, this is the least we can do, is the least. There are deeper things we can do, many of you can log on and, and support Catholic charities. Catholic charities is very deep in there, helping through Poland. Uh, uh, you can, you can find your own way, different ways to support, uh, 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 them with your, your talents, eh, your treasure, and anything that you have. But this is the least we can do to pray for them, uh, and consecrate them into God's hands, okay? Well, thank you very much, and, uh, God bless you. I wish all of you a very happy Easter, and, uh, come back strong, and let's continue our Bible study.